I beg the attention to Councilmember Jensen for the invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Your Honor. If everyone will observe a moment of silence in accordance with their own faith. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no proclamations or presentations at this time. We proceed with the roll call.
Mayor DeLaysla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Clear.
Eric Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen?
Present.
Mays?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
At this moment, we proceed with appointments of the clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Grant Sork to the Topeka Landmarks Commission for a term ending March 1, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
As he's from my district, I will make that motion.
Second.
All does in favor vote, the mayor does not vote.
We have nine yes.
Mr. Sork is reinstated into the Landmarks Commission. Mr. Sork, if you will please stand so that we may recognize you. Thank you for your question. We now proceed to the consent agenda if the clerk would read.
A is approval of workers' compensation settlement in the amount of $15,000 for Trenton Ginn, former City of Topeka employee, for an injury sustained while engaged in normal work duties. B are minutes of the regular meeting at February 6, 2018, and there are no applications.
What is the council's pleasure? Councilmember Jensen?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Lesser? We now proceed to voting. 10 voting yes, the consent agenda passes. We now move into item six, action items, governing body rules and procedures. If the clerk would read.
Is approval of the governing body rules and procedures.
City manager?
Mayor, governing body, this item is coming back again to us after some reviews that occurred. City Attorney Lisa Robson has prepared an amendment to the governing body rules on consideration at the request of Councilwoman Ortiz, but her administer that, but information is there for you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Mrs. Mayor. I was wondering if he meant her or her, that her. Anyway, I want to thank you guys for deferring this, fighting this flu bug that's going around, and it was very important to me. You all should have Ortiz's proposal. There's not an issue with it, despite what others may say. What this does is, I've been on the council for 12 years, and I've seen deputy mayor, people passed over for deputy mayor, including myself, and what this does is makes it really fair for everybody and puts you in seniority line. If you don't want to be deputy mayor, then you can just, you know, go ahead and deny it or decline it. But, you know, I truly feel like we are all elected by citizens of Topeka, and that's why we all sit here. And I've seen the political process of, you know, one person wants it over another for whatever reason, or even to put it on their stance, you know, served as deputy mayor when they're running for a certain office. So I just think this makes it a little bit fair, and I would really like to see this in there so that we can continue that process and that everybody gets a fair and equal chance and not just those that are liked and not liked. So I'd make a motion to adopt this amendment. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a second, even if it's for discussion purposes?
Sure, I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Discussion, any questions or comments? Councilman Jensen?
Thank you. My only concern with this is we're making decisions for future councils, and I don't know, I mean, you're actually right, this is our tradition, but I don't know that I'm comfortable binding a future council into the traditions we have today. I know there's some, I doubt it's against the law for us to bind a future council to that tradition, but it just, it seems to me that each council should make up its own rules with how that process works, and I'm just not sure I'm comfortable making a decision now for a future council based on a tradition that we observe today. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Even though we kind of follow that guideline now, we haven't always followed that guideline. And, you know, these are our rules, and just like it'll be their rules, they can take it out if they don't like it, but it's just something that's why I wanted to implement.
I understand, and again, I don't know the rules of the previous councils because I didn't serve on them, but I just don't let them comfortable putting before, I mean, yes, you're right, they can change the rule. So if they could, then is there a reason to even put it in there? If it's very easy to suspend the rules and work around them, then, you know, for something like this, we have a tradition that we follow generally, some councils choose not to, so why would we put it into a rule that then they could just override?
Well, that's anything that we do.
And that's true. So really, we're just creating a set of guidelines essentially, so.
Anybody else have any discussion? Councilwoman Clear?
Just so I don't have to go back and poll, was this not in the last year at all? There was nothing about it, but this is basically what we do, right? What's the difference, I guess? What's the difference between what we usually have done and what you're putting in?
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Well, we've just, we've just really kind of started doing this, but traditionally we haven't done that. I've seen people serve as deputy mayor two or three times since I've been, you know, here, so we've kind of done a better job at that. You know, just like I was passed over, somebody was running for mayor the next office, so they wanted to put that on their, you know, well, yeah, you know, on their cards and stuff. And that's what I'm saying, I just don't, I don't think that that's really fair. I think, I think that as a governing body, you know, we should, we should pass it all around. I've seen people that they've been passed over several years in a row, you know, and some people haven't even served that wanted to serve, and I'm just trying to be fair and look at that, you know, and I've had constituents saying, well, why didn't my person get voted or whatever? So that's what I'm looking at, it kind of takes the politics out, to me it does. And so I've seen it, I've seen it both ways, but the other way, I just, I just really, really didn't like that.
Any other comments, questions from the body? Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Being new to the council, I would rely upon a little bit of background information, maybe Councilman Hiller, who is the SVP, or yourself, or others, has the past practice caused any difficulties for the governing body in doing the business of the body? Just want a little bit of background on that, other than just coming into a proposal without something to support it.
Thank you, Councilman Padilla. Councilwoman Hiller?
I wasn't expecting this, so I don't, I don't have a position on it really, but a little bit of history on it to add to what Councilwoman Ortiz has shared is that we have, it was really only probably in the last four or five years that deputy mayor was more than just a functional thing that people took turns doing, and all of a sudden it became a big deal and people made a big deal about the title, for what that's worth. The other thing that I discovered, and it might have been one of the times when Councilwoman Ortiz got passed over, I'm not sure, but people who've been a little more seasoned in open meetings, rules, have, have sometimes lobbied the brand newly elected people to vote for them. And I remember the first time I saw that happen, I was, I was so surprised, and the person who was doing it said, oh, well, you know, because they're not sworn in yet, they're not covered by open meetings, so I can go lobby all these new people and get them to vote for me. And I thought, wow. I was surprised at that. It's always an awkward process, however, and we have pretty much passed it around, so I understand where Councilwoman Ortiz is coming from as well, but that's a little bit more history about how it's been handled.
Any other comments or questions from the body? Councilman Lesser?
The only thing I, question I have is, is tonight the first time that I've gotten, gotten this? That would be the only, honestly, the only concern that I have. I don't have necessarily a problem with it, but, but I'm trying to read through it here right now as I'm listening to it, as it's being, you know, presented, and that's generally not a way that I like to make decisions, quite frankly. That being the case, I, and being new, you know, I don't, you know, tonight I don't have an opinion, you know, to be honest with you, because I haven't had time to really look through it, read it, think about it, understand it, and I would probably have to abstain on something like that because I don't have the information, and I don't want to hinder your motion, and at the same time, I don't want to vote for something that I don't truly understand at this point in time.
So Councilman Lesser, what I'm hearing is that you would prefer to defer it?
I would prefer that, but that's just because I, this is the first time I've read it, and I haven't had time to really even think about it, obviously. Haven't had time to read it, to be really honest with you.
Councilman Jensen?
I would move to defer two weeks.
No, it can't be two weeks.
Well, either one week or four weeks, something like that.
Oh, my, true, okay. Is one week sufficient?
Yes, I do.
Okay. One week? Move to defer for one week.
So we need to either vote it down first or eliminate the first motion so that we could go ahead and would you?
I'll withdraw.
You withdraw your motion? Okay, withdrawal motion, then I have a motion to defer for a week by Councilman Lesser and a motion, a second to that motion to defer for two weeks, the Ortiz proposal.
One week.
One week.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, once we vote, conversation stops, and I realize that the motion on the table is about deferring this, but I think it would probably be helpful, before we walk out of here, to have the city attorney explain the charter ordinance language that's on the back versus this being proposed as part, actually, of just the election of a chair.
Absolutely, we're in discussion mode, so if the attorney could...
Absolutely. When Councilmember Ortiz contacted me this morning to draft some language, the first thing I did was take a look through the charter and through the municipal code provisions, and Charter Ordinance A2-26 addresses the deputy mayor position. It's very broad in nature, so it basically just states that the deputy mayor is to be elected at the third meeting in January. It really doesn't outline a process for doing that. So I think that's kind of where Councilmember Ortiz was coming from, that perhaps that the process could be outlined in the governing body rules. She asked me a logical place to put that, and I was thinking, the only place that really talks about members of the body as opposed to the process of the meeting was where it talks about chair. So I just divided it into several subsections and just incorporated the past practice into language.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller?
Could I follow up a question? Is this section A2-26 one of the sections that the council itself can amend, or is it one of the ones that has to be voted on by the citizens?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'm going to guess that it probably can be voted on by the body, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
I think it is. It's one of the ones that can be voted on by the body, but just for the new members especially, this, the charter ordinance has some sections that had to be voted on by the public. A year ago, we really, I think it was a year ago, really spent, I don't know, six to nine months doing an overhaul of the structural sections of the charter as well as the council rules, and we tried real hard to separate, they were already, different issues were separated between the two, and we worked hard to keep those separated. I guess as I'm looking at this, given that it's the charter that talks about the, how the deputy mayor gets elected, I wonder if we wanted to change it, if it would be more appropriate in the charter rather than in the council rules. I just wanted to throw that out for consideration.
Yeah, because it goes with the... Councilman Jensen?
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Jensen?
One, one thing that would help me is if, if somebody could explain the process that we would use to select somebody with a preference. I'm not understanding how, how we would vote that way. You know, how does somebody receive preference, and then how is that indicated on a ballot, and what, does that person automatically get two votes then? What's the process by which we would declare someone has preference and then run the voting? And that doesn't need to be described tonight, but, you know, what does preference mean, I guess? I need to understand more about how this process would actually be executed.
Councilmember Jensen, I think that preference is just that you go down the line, you see who's got the most seniority, and then those individuals are the, are the folks that, it's a, yeah...
So are they automatically nominated then?
Everybody is on ballot, and yes, they would be, and I think it's, it's not stating that that has to be the way it is, I think that's why it says preference.
But it's saying that they'll receive preference.
They'll receive preference.
Yeah, so what does that mean?
Preference for consideration in that position. Thank you. Yes, deputy mayor, I think that the sentiment of this is that if an individual has seniority and has been on the council longest and has not been able to participate, they would automatically be up for consideration for deputy mayor unless they indicate that they are not interested.
So we have special ballots for that then?
No. Same way we do it.
So how are you going to indicate somebody has preference then?
Keep track like we're doing now.
So it seems like we have questions with regards to the procedure?
Yes.
And I think that they are noted by staff, that this is one of the questions that we have. In addition to that, there's a question from Councilwoman Hiller with regards to whether we enact this change with regards to the charter ordinance, or if we do it with regards to our procedures. Are there any other questions that are important or discussion items that we would like to have our staff look into a little bit further, or any other questions that you would like to act? Councilwoman Ortiz? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have another comment. If you go to page for 2.4, and, Madam Chair, I think Councilman Padilla asked for your, your response as well, and I hope that you would give him your, what you've experienced. On 2.4, right of floor, this is very important to me. Any member designed to speak should be recognized by the meeting chair. I wanted to make sure that was in there, and I see that it is. If you've ever sat in the mayor's position to keep order from all of us from just hollering out, it's, it's crazy, it's chaotic. So I'm glad to see that's in there. I hope Mr. Henderson will take note to that, and just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ortiz. Any other comments or questions for Councilwoman Ortiz before we vote to defer the motion for a week? Seeing none, we proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 yes means the pass, the motion passes unanimously. We now move to non-action items. We are in item A, discussion of the citywide retailers' half-cent sales tax update. City manager?
Oh, if the clerk would read.
A is an update on the citywide half-cent sales tax program and discussion on reauthorization of the sales tax.
Vice Director Jason Peake has prepared an update for you all on the implementation of our sales tax program, kind of reviewing what we've done in the past and what we still plan for this year and the expiration, and the need for the continuance of that sales tax program. Correct?
Good evening, governing body. As City Manager said, I'm going to talk about the citywide half-cent sales tax. I want to talk about this kind of as a story in three parts. I think it's important to kind of look at the past of why this sales tax came to be, talk about currently, what we've been doing with it, and then talk about the future. So as many of you know, almost nine years ago to the day, it was in February when the governing body actually took action and authorized the current, what we call the citywide half-cent sales tax. And this sales tax basically has been used exclusively for the cost of maintenance and improvements of existing city streets, gutters, curbs, sidewalks, alleys, and street lighting. And this half-cent citywide sales tax will expire on October 1, 2019, so we're less than two months or two years away from that expert expiration. Many of you on this body can probably speak better than I can to the history of why this sales tax came into being, but I wanted to kind of give you what I've learned in the short two years that I've been here with the city of why this came into play. What you have before you on page three in your handouts, this is a chart looking basically at, at two things. The blue line, which has more fluctuation, is basically a record of major street project expenditures from 1997 up to 2009. The red line, which of course is more flat across the chart, is a reflection of what we call the motor fuel fund budget. So these are the dollars we collect from motor fuel sales tax that funds kind of our street maintenance and operations, covers everything from street sweeping, snow removal, pothole repairs, alley work, and some minor street work. And so the story these two chart, or these two lines tell in this graph is, over that period from 97 to 2009, we averaged just over $4 million annually in street projects. Our motor fuel fund has averaged a little over $6 million, but as you can see from that chart, it stayed relatively flat. So it's no, no surprise as we got into 2009 with the amount of streets that we had going on in the city that we were underinvesting in the maintenance need there. And so I suspect that's a lot of why the call for that half-cent sales tax came into being. And let's just put that in perspective, that $4.5 million in major street projects, 2018 budget's $24.4 million, so six times what our average annual investment was over that And so we had, if we kind of move up to the present, the citywide half-cent sales tax was passed in 2009. I think there were a lot of learning lessons that happened early on with getting those projects underway, but what this map shows you is basically the major street project work that has been completed or in process to be complete by the end of 2019. This represents over 87 separate individual projects throughout the city, and you can see that there's a large distribution of those projects throughout the city. The other thing that I'd point out is a lot of that work is on our major streets, so our arterials and collectors. And so that's, I think, an important fact to point out, because even when I got here in 2016, what was the number one complaint, issues for the council was, what are we doing to fix our streets? I mean, we are bringing in an average of $14 million annually, when are we going to get to our streets? And we showed you this as a part of the discussion of the pavement management program, kind of say, yes, we've had a good investment in our streets, we've seen a increase in the pavement condition of our arterial and collector streets, those major roads, but if we look at where we were in 2006 to 2016, this chart's basically, the blue is pavement condition index for 2006, the percentage of streets that were either in good, fair, or poor categories, and then the yellow, of course, is where we were in 2016, and you can see there's a slide. So overall, we're bringing up arterials and collectors, but our system is getting worse. And so that led basically to a discussion with council in early 2017 to talk about, we need to shift away from a project focus, about which street are we working on when, and get more to what we call the pavement management program and this pavement condition index. What do you want the condition of our streets to be as an overall system score? And then let's look at that condition throughout the city and talk about whether we should be doing preventative maintenance, full-depth repairs, fill and overlay, or ultimately reconstruction, so that we're investing the dollars that you give the public works departments for street repairs strategically to achieve that desired pavement condition goal. And so we saw through that discussion, support from the council for kind of changing from that project to a program focus, and with that, there was discussion with this body about setting that goal kind of in our CIP and our budget priorities, and actually putting some specific language. We want to shoot for a 60, we're at a 55, 56, I do a little rounding with a decimal based on the work we've been doing, but get to a 60 over 10 years. What we told this body, that requires an annual investment of $24.4 million annually over 10 years to get us to that goal. And then there was the added caveat is that's, that's the minimum. The desire, as Councilman Jensen's asked, how do we get, you know, to a better level, was to set a higher expectation of 70. And of course, that would require an additional $14 million on top of that $24 million that we're currently spending. And so that kind of brings us up to the present day and where we are in 2018. And what this is, is a pie chart and taking that $24.4 million that council approved for the budget for 2018 and showing you the different funding sources that go into that. And of course, the largest is the citywide, it's about 52% of the citywide sales tax goes to street maintenance repairs, that's not including the portion that goes to alleys, curb and gutter sidewalks, it's just our, our street work. The countywide has 30% of that budget for 2018, and as you know, the countywide identifies very specific projects, so we can only use those funds on specific projects until we complete all those projects. State and federal, through money we get from KDOT, or the federal DOT is at about 4%, and we can talk about how that number fluctuates and has kind of a declining trend. Within our motor fuel fund, so coming back to kind of that flat budget from 97 to 2009 and even into 2017, we're not much higher on the motor fuel fund, represents about 3% of our pavement management program. And this year, there was a concerted effort by council to find money within the general fund and put that into the pavement management, and so 5% of the budget this year is coming out of the general fund. And so that's kind of where we are, and I wanted to, I guess, just pause at that point and see if there are any questions before I talk about kind of where, where we're headed. Yes, ma'am?
Councilwoman Clear?
I'm seeing in here, it says, you know, you're, the ballot language, and it says "streetlights." Is that the streetlights that you actually do on the improved and new streets, or can that be anywhere in the city, or why does it say "street lighting"?
That was the specific ballot language. I can't speak to why that particular piece of infrastructure was included, but I do know in the language and the documents we got from council was, it was "streetlights, not traffic signals," and we maintain existing, so this wouldn't be enhancements or adding streetlights to a corridor. So I can't speak to why that specific was in there, but that would be the interpretation of how that would be used.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. I always get confused, so which one has the existing in there? Is that the county?
The citywide half-cent, the one we're talking about tonight, that's just for existing. We can't use that to add new roads or even widen existing. We can't use that to add new roads or even widen existing roads.
Right. That's the one I've always had a problem with because in my district, I don't have curbs, I don't have gutters, I don't have sidewalks. So guess what? I don't get any of that, but I pay this tax into it, and my constituents do. We have ditches, right, Mr. H.?
Yes, ma'am.
And he almost ran in my ditch. And I mean, we have huge ditches. So are we looking at putting that back on the ballot, that same existing language? Or are we going to take that out? Or do you know?
That's why, I mean, I'll get to that. But I think that's a question that we want to ask you and need policy guidance on what do you want that ballot language to say? Do you still want that same language in there, or you want to modify it to reflect others?
Well, I know I didn't vote for it because it had that one key word in there, existing. And if you go down 21st Street, start at 21st and Golden, and me and Councilwoman Everhart, we got that beautiful street in there all the way to Whittingburg, I believe. But guess what? We couldn't pull the kids out of the ditches because there was no sidewalk that we could put in there back with that money. And luckily, the city manager found some money, and we have a sidewalk through there now. But that is a huge, huge problem, especially when we could use that money and we're already there and we're already doing these projects, and we need to really, really look at that. And that's just not the only place, but that's a lot in my district. And even, I have a little bit of Oakland, you know, even in Oakland, it's like that. I know Mr. Henderson's district, it's like that. Padilla, I think you have a little bit too. So there's still a lot out there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Just to clarify the history a little bit for those that maybe weren't here, that maintain and improve existing streets, curb and gutter, sidewalks was what the people seemed to really want at the time. And so that, they were concerned that they wanted to get as much bang for their buck out of getting the streets that we already had fixed. And so we can consider further in the future. Each year, if somebody goes back and looks for the history, there was a bucket, if you will, that divided the money into streets, curb and gutter, help me, ADA, and alleys. Just since Councilwoman Clear brought up the streetlights, the streetlights have never been budgeted in there, and as far as I know, never a penny was spent on streetlights in the course of now nine years, but they were in there. So.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Some of the concerns I've heard from folks out of this half-cent sales taxes, there was a general assumption that that would solve our streets problems. And there's no way that was realistic. There wasn't enough money there. You know, we have a $300 million hole now, and $14 million a year times 10 years does not equal 300 million. So as we look at doing this again, I think we need to look at, does it need to be more than a half-cent sales tax? I mean, we need to fix our streets over the next 10 years, and we need to be dang sure that we're putting up money in this half-cent sales tax that we can tell every single person, your road will get fixed within the next 10 years with this tax. I think that is absolutely critical because, not that the team that put the first tax together didn't do an excellent job, but that was a general assumption from the public was that whatever your street is, it's going to get redone or fixed. And the truth to the matter is that that just wasn't a reality. You know, another example is the alleys in my district. They were in here, but there was just no way that that was going to be affordable, given the amount of money raised. So I think it's imperative that as we pitch this again, it has to be a definitive funding solution that will fix every road in our town over the course of the timeframe. Now, if we need to do 15 years instead of 10 to make it affordable, I think we need to look at that. But given that this is our third sales tax for street maintenance, people are getting a little tired of that. I think we need to, well, we got two now, so this will be the third one when we renew it. This has to be definitive, and we have to do it right.
Councilwoman Clear.
I think that's dangerous because fixing streets are subjective. Or you may think, I fixed your street, and my fixing street is very subjective on what you think that means. Along with, I think it was Councilmember Ortiz, I also, like, up north by Lower Silverlake Road, back in that area, Lyman, they haven't had anything done to their streets in 50 years. And they told me that, they have been told, they don't have any sidewalks, they don't have anything, that theirs was going to be fixed. So I'm kind of like, hey, I didn't get any of that money up there either, didn't get any in Oakland, got that little bit in North Topeka. So somehow, I don't know how we can equal out all this money doesn't go to one section of the city.
Deputy Mayor.
So if I could respond, you're actually right. Fixing streets is subjective, but now we have data. You know, we've run that scan drug over all the streets in the city. We have a PCI compliance index. We have the ability to do long-range planning. Now, can we tell people to the day when their street will be replaced? No. But I think it's reasonable to tell people within the 15-year plan, when, given the things we know now, people could expect to see something done on their streets. I have people that haven't had their roads redone in 50 years either, and they're furious because they've passed all of this tax money and nothing has happened. And no one can even tell them when or if their streets will ever get fixed. And I think we absolutely have to commit to the people of this community. If we're going to ask you to fund this a third time, we will get your street done within that timeframe, given that there isn't some major catastrophe or some massive washout where we have to rebuild something.
Councilwoman Clear.
So then we're all off the council, their streets didn't get fixed. Then what's their recourse? We can't promise that.
We did before, and we didn't do it, and now we're here.
Councilwoman Jensen, point of order. Councilman Mace.
When I look at this pie chart and I see 52% of our pavement budget coming from the sales tax, I understand what you're saying, Councilman Jensen, but if we ask for too much and the voters don't want to give us that much, we're in a really, really tough place at that point.
I think that the discussion is leading us towards the next portion of the presentation. I don't want to stifle conversation. This is a very important subject to our community. I think that one of the things that we've been working on as a council is talking about what our priorities are for the betterment of our community overall and by district. And one of the things that really came up front is the importance of us to do infrastructure work. To echo a little bit of what Councilwoman Ortiz is saying, we had the privilege on Saturday to spend some time together and drive through the roads. And Norwood, which is in Councilwoman Ortiz's district, I asked, hey, when I was running for office, this is one of the areas that was really interested in sidewalks. What's happening here? And Dr. Peake said, well, happens that, yes, we did fix the road. However, your question about the sidewalks and about everything else, we were not able to do so because we didn't have the mechanism to do so. So as we are talking about this, I think that we all understand how important it is for all of us, number one, to understand what our parameters are. Number two, to understand the impact that we could have, because this is a big policy decision. And number three, ensure that we are working with our community to help them understand what this could really do. This is great discussion. I don't want to stifle again conversation, but I think that Dr. Peake is going to go into the steps on what this would look like and with regards to the years that we're able to extend this tax and everything. So if you are all in agreement, I would just defer back to Dr. Peake so that he can continue his presentation.
Sure. Two more slides to kind of get through the presentation, and that's kind of looking towards the future. So this next slide with all the different colors, let me walk you through what we're doing here. This is basically looking at the horizon of the countywide sales tax because that's a current sales tax that will expire in 2031 with some very specific projects. Like I said, it makes up about 30% of the budget. So that's why the timeframe extends out to 2031. And this is basically a forecast for just pavement, okay? So when we're talking about fixing streets in this sense, we're talking about the pavement. There is some curb and gutter included on those reconstructions, but in general, you're really talking about the pavement asset. And so this chart assumes that the general fund continues to support the pavement management program at $1.2 million annually. So every year, we go through our budgeting process, that would be an expectation. It also assumes that our general obligation bond revenue, we just had the CIP tour, and we're going to be talking about CIP with you, that we average $2.4 million out of that general obligation bond budget for street projects. And that also assumes that by the time we get to 2023, we're upping that to a minimum commitment of $3 million annually, which is about a third of the general obligation bond annual budget under the council policy for that $27 million over a three-year CIB. So a lot of moving parts in our funding sources for pavement management. Also, you can see, walk you through the colors. On the bottom of the chart is basically, the blue is the general obligation bond. As we move up, the next color level is the citywide half-cent sales tax. The small gray colors are federal and state funds. We're just not really expecting a whole lot of support out of those, but some support for pavement management. The next larger bar, the yellowish-orange, is our countywide sales tax. The blue towards the top is the general fund. And then at the very top, the green is the motor fuel fund. Across the entire chart, there's a dash line, that's about $24.4 million. That's what we need to average on an annual space. And then on the far left-hand part of the chart is the average over this period. And that's basically about $1 million shy of that average annual we need just to get to 60. So when Councilman Jensen talks about, we want to fix all the streets, we need to really understand what do you mean by that in terms of PCI. We can come back with numbers on that, but what I can tell you, just on these assumptions and the forecast, we're $1 million shy on our average annual of reaching that 60 over the next planning horizon. So that's the general forecast for you as a governing body. You've really got four kind of policy decisions. Some are a little more detailed than others. The first is the question whether to renew or not renew the sales tax. You know, we don't want to assume that's a given, but that's a decision you have to make. Number two, just kind of as the discussion has gone on here, is what level of sales tax? Is it a continuation? Is there an increase? Is there some discussion in the ballot language about giving voters choices between those? And then I think more specifically, that ballot language that you're talking about as we had in the CIP, is there language that gets in there about completing some of those other street elements and the cost of improving those streets that we need in there? And is there some flexibility? Because you still need the $24.4 million to focus on pavement to get to that 60 over a 10-year period. So even if you want to address some of those other things, you've got to remember, there's got to be some core funding for that. And then the last is the election cycle. As you saw within your packet, we can do a resolution, put it on the general ballot in November. A decision has to be made by August 1st to do that. You do have the option of holding a special election. Of course, there's a cost associated with that that we'd have to bear. So those are kind of the key policy decisions. We're not expecting you to make those decisions, but start to give us feedback and direction on what information you need so we can come back to you and help you make a decision. And with that, I'll stand for any additional questions.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Robertson, what are the rules behind this tax? Does it have to be 10 years? Is there a maximum amount that we can charge or a minimum amount we can charge? Is there, you know, could we craft a language so that we ask the public, do you want PCI 50 roads, click here and pay this much? Do you want 60, pay this much? 70, pay this much? That's what they had. What are our options here? Is one of them?
It does say in the statute, in case A12-189, that this type of tax cannot exceed 10 years in length. So it does restrict it to a 10-year period of time. As to a ballot language and having options in the booth, I think that's something we would have to talk to the election commissioner about. I'm not sure that how workable that would be, but, and then the range of percentages are noted in, I guess, a different section.
It's up to one?
Yeah, I think it goes up to one.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, it's up to 1% for a special.
Not to exceed one.
Not to exceed. So we can choose in quarter increment, or actually, I think it's.
Wait, it's, yeah.
.05% increments.
And increments of .5.
Okay. Well, and so perhaps it's two ballot questions then. You know, if you do one, you agree to one ballot question, our roads get fixed to a certain level. And if you agree to the second, then we're able to fix them to a second level. I mean, I think we have to give the public the option to tell us how much money they want to be taxed and what condition their roads are in, because otherwise, you know, we're here in this position now because before, when we said we were going to fix the roads, we didn't get them all done. And again, as I've said before, that was an unrealistic expectation, given the amount of revenue we're going to raise. But the folks I've talked to were just furious that these taxes haven't completely fixed all the roads, even though that was never an option. I think that will help communicate the expectation they're going to get out of these.
Councilwoman Lister.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if this question is for you, Jason, or for the city manager, Assistant City Manager. The timing of this, obviously, has anyone done, have we done any due diligence? I know that it's early, but the president came out and said that there's going to be $200 billion in infrastructure, $44 million or $44 billion in 2019 if it does pass. Have we done any of our diligence in how that is going to affect us in regards to roads and infrastructure?
I haven't had a chance to read the proposal, but I can tell you that we know from experience and other cities have looked at, you know, when there was the large spending bill that was passed under President Obama, we each saw that if we had shovel-ready projects, that there was an opportunity for us to go after money to help us with different projects. I think with the work that we're currently doing, projecting what projects need to be accomplished and what's working with engineer, I think we could ramp up in order to meet an opportunity should it present ourselves for putting in a grant application for a particular road project.
If I could just add to that one thing, just a little inside baseball and federal funding is, that federal funding goes to designated routes, primarily our arterial and collectors, things that are part of the national highway system. Our local streets are not. That's where we have the largest inventory of pavement condition. So even if we would get some federal funds to help us on our arterials and collectors, the large portion of this money needed in pavement management is to go into those local streets. So I mean, there's a, it's not going to basically make up the significant difference that we're talking about to go to a different level.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. Something for us to think about as we, I so appreciate the kickoff to this discussion because it's really important. One of the things that did happen is, I was elected for the first time at the same time as that citywide sales tax was voted in. You know, we watched at the time, we figured out in part that the city streets weren't getting done because somehow, when that first countywide tax was passed, we agreed to turn everything around the edge of the city to get out of the city into the county into five lanes and didn't have any of that money, weren't spending any of that money in town. We can ask voters about that, but we really have a lot of responsibility to look at that. Similarly, when our first citywide tax was passed, the staff was so used to not having any money and not really doing an in-depth plan that they didn't have one at the time. They did do, however, a 10-year plan, but realized once we got into it that the estimates had been based on sort of a simple formula of mill and overlay for everything. But we had concrete streets that we weren't going to mill and overlay. And they also realized that the streets themselves needed to be rebuilt, not just repaved. And again, that's pretty complicated, and it's the kind of thing that Jason and his staff have now, you know, had the surveys done as well as a lot of experience with taking apart those streets that at first people thought maybe could be mill and overlay even. So we learned that the problem was literally much deeper than we thought. So it's kind of complicated to throw it out. I think that, again, it's tempting to ask the voters, but I think we need to spend the time with the staff and really, really get inside. the time with the staff and really, really get inside what we're facing so that we can take in public input, but come up with, and I know some of the business people have been working, my understanding, they've been working on something too, so that we can provide leadership and explanation as to what we, you know, either a single proposal or a couple of them that end up working toward one on the ballot. It just was so complicated. And I don't know if you're going to get in, I know that the staff has been getting ready to inventory the alleys, but is, they've at least been considering making a proposal to us that's to kind of roll back how we address alleys in the first place to save money short-term, but also long-term. We have to think about that. One of the other reasons that it costs more money to do the streets that we had was because, and I put it in simple terms when I tell the story, is that we had a history of every time we repaved, rebuilt, or even just repaved a street, we'd have a broken water main under it, you know, within three to six months. And the citizens said, "Are you nuts? Get in there and get the utilities done underneath first so that we don't end up digging up that same brand-new street six months later." And that really set everybody back, but it has made a difference. And I don't know the exact numbers, but in those first years, really, you know, besides all the street projects, the water mains were popping all over town. And I know that we had trouble under East 37th and Adams this year. I think we had a water main go before the construction was quite done. But other than that, I haven't heard about that happening. I think we've been successful. Once again, that's kind of complicated to just throw out to the voters, but if, the more we can get on top of the understanding of why it's worth it to do that rebuild, the better we'll be able to understand those big dollars and explain it to people. And I might have just told you all I know, too. I feel like I need to start over with as much as we've done even. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dr. Peak, first of all, thank you for your presentation. So that we know what is reasonable to ask for, would it be possible to get some information from engineering or from public works staff as to what's like the difference between a mill and overlay cost, like per lane mile? I know when we did the capital improvement project tour on Saturday, I think it was mentioned a mile is like a million and a half dollars per lane mile for the major reconstruction where we're putting storm sewer and widening the streets and stuff. But I assume like the mill and overlay, I guess I just want us to have all the information we can to know, you know, this is going to cost, you know, $50 million a year if we want to, you know, do curb and gutter and new storm sewer everywhere versus mill and overlays? Because I guess it's probably my understanding that the mill and overlay is probably the biggest bang for the buck. Get a lot of that done in a short amount of time, and it really improves the ride surface. But I don't know that for certain, though.
We can work on getting you that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
To further complicate this, I know everyone's thrilled. The other thing we also have to consider, as Councilwoman Heller said, is the infrastructure we have under the streets, you know, the water lines and sewer lines. You're absolutely right, it doesn't make any sense to repave a road if we have to replace that underlying infrastructure within the next, you know, couple of years. So, you know, it's a massive planning operation, but I think the team we have now is sharp enough to do it, and I can't wait to see it.
Councilwoman Heller.
One more short one. On the financial budget forecast, just want to, people who've been around, I know this is a big deal with me in terms of borrowing versus cash, but where we look at the GO bond line, that's really, the bonds are a vehicle to get money on the table, but they are not money. And whenever we bond, it's going to cost us one and a half times that amount, I assume, typically out of the general fund to pay for it. So I don't like to see the GO bond line grow, but if we're going to consider doing that, then an honest, somewhere, the money to pay for it has to be in that line.
So just, I guess, a clarification in the sense I'm not assuming a growth in the GO bond we are currently, that's just saying that the share of the GO bond money that you give us through your policy, we would need to have at least $3 million of that $9 million annually dedicated to streets. So it's not assuming an increase in our, over our current practice and policy for GO bond funding?
Well, my thing has been, I think we should reduce it.
I understand, but I just want to make sure we're clear, we're not, I mean, that is an option, but what we're just showing is we'd need that share to be that much annually from the GO bond.
I understand. I just wanted to point it out because it's money.
As we consider the discussion, we have somebody signed up for public comment, and I would like to recognize him since we're in the midst of discussion, Mr. James Parrish.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name's Jim Parrish, and I come to offer information, a little bit of information on the subject of the election that will be required to extend or increase the half-cent sales tax or whatever, the sales tax for street repair. I am the chair of an organization known as Future Forward. Future Forward was created as one of the entities that promoted the economic development and infrastructure countywide half-cent sales tax in 2014. Although the name of the organizations has not always been the same, the people have pretty much been the same over the last five elections, whether it's been a countywide economic development and infrastructure effort or simply a street or a city effort. The city effort in 2009 to fix our streets, that was our campaign slogan, "Fix our streets", was passed by the voters by about a 57% margin after a campaign. There was opposition, there was likely to be opposition in the election. We want you to know, and the "we" being the volunteers and the four of us, Pat Dorm of Federal Home Loan Bank, Jim Ogle with the Freedom Foundation, and Bartlett West, Neil Dobler of Bartlett West, we are the officers of this little corporation, which is a 501(c)(6) corporation. But there are a number of other volunteers that worked before and are willing to work again on this effort. And I think it's, the timeframe is pretty short, the political questions, which we would be concerned with, are important to be discussed and vetted, and the policy questions are going to be difficult. Sales taxes aren't popular necessarily, they tend to be regressive, but we want to remember that nearly 30% of the sales tax is paid by somebody outside our community who come in and use our streets and use our facility. So as you think this through, we stand ready to assist in, from a political perspective, in giving you information and help, and ultimately, if there's a question, to help adopt that question. I just thought it would be good for you to know we still exist. We've met two or three times to review the conditions, to get information in anticipation of a ballot question that would be coming up soon. How's that?
Are there any questions for Mr. Parrish? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish, thank you for coming. Have you done any research into what the amount that sort of the citizens around here can really palette without it being too overbearing on their finances? I mean, do we really cap out at 10% of our, you know, total sales tax?
Not, no, Mr. Deputy Mayor, not on that particular question. We, in the previous campaigns, we have done research to see where the voters stood on these various issues, and I would anticipate we would want to do that again to get information on what the voters would tolerate. There is a limit, and as we speak, we're not sure what the state will be doing with its revenue challenge and whether that might affect sales tax levels. And I think we need to be sensitive to that. From just a standpoint of experience and the work we've done over the last 15 years, I feel comfortable that the voters would be optimistic toward continuing the existing half-cent sales tax for a period of time. And beyond that, I think it's a good question and one we need to think very, about very clearly.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Parrish? Councilwoman Heller.
Does your group yet have some starting guidance for us?
Well, I think we, like you, are now armed with a lot more information about the specifics, the data, the condition of the streets, and I think maybe more excited about passing something that we might have been in 2009. We really initiated a lot of the process then. As far as advice, I think it's a process, and with the information we have and gauging the political climate, we will be in a position to offer some advice. And if there is a campaign, if there is opposition to this question, to raise funds and help put forward a campaign that would allow it to pass, because we all believe it's very important that we not let these streets get neglected any further than they are. It's really a negative for our potential for growth and for our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. How you doing, Jim?
Fine.
You know, the first time we passed this, I remember there was a lot of discussion. And I remember vaguely just sitting here thinking about it. One of the things about the ballot question is we wanted to keep it short and simple and not confuse the voters. Do you remember that, Jim?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
And I think my colleagues need to hear that. When you start putting 10% over here, this amount over there, you know what? Some of them voters are just going to say, "I'm not going to vote for any of that." And I remember there was a lot of discussion about that. And we chose our words very, very carefully. But would you agree with me? We need to keep it as simple as possible to the voters so that they get a clear understanding.
Yes, I think it, I agree that it needs to be simple, and I think about the two elections that we have this year coming up. There's a primary and a general. It will be difficult to be geared up for the primary election, given the timeframe that we have. The general election offers more voters the opportunity to weigh in on this. And I think the voters will be sympathetic to this question if they clearly understand it on a very base level. Voters in Topeka, in my experience, have tended to be optimistic and be in favor of things if they're clearly explained and there's a need shown that the benefits will come from their voting yes. And the city has done a really good job over the last 10 years of demonstrating that we're fixing those streets we said we'd fix. We can't fix them all, we couldn't possibly fix them all with the little money that we had, but we've made tremendous progress. And I think having done that sends a positive message to the voters that we did what we said we would do and gives us a little boost in the, for the prospects of continuing it.
Any other, yes.
Mr. City Manager, thank you. Mr. City Manager, could I get like a list of how much was collected all 10 of those years so we can kind of get an idea? Is it growing? Is it staying the same?
Yes, I'll get that for you.
And then I had another question about when it actually expires. Does it expire this election season? Or does it expire next year's election?
It's in 2019, October 2019.
So we're a year out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Parrish, for your time and your devotion to this community. I think that it's admirable that you're just trying to support us in this endeavor and that you've come before the body and allowed questions from the body as well, as we are talking about the future of our community and the investment and the importance that the business community is seeing for our roads to ensure that we have adequate quality of life. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Is there any other discussion?
I have one other small thing.
Yes. Councilman Cohen.
It's also along with the ballot language, because we had kind of boxed ourselves into repairing long stretches of road that only just certain areas of the road really needed to be fixed. And I think if we can focus more on that, using the pavement condition index as our guide on what needs to be fixed, I think that would be good. And I think that will also alleviate the transparency issue that we are getting these streets done because they're right here in the plan. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other comments, I think that we move on to Item B, Discussion of Building Code Administrative Process Update. Let the tort code read.
B is an update on the Building Code Administrative Process.
City Manager.
The staff brought forward to the governing body a request to approve the 2015 IBC, IFC, and LSC, Iowa Building Code, Iowa Fire Code, and Life Safety Code. In the discussions, decision was made to postpone until we had an opportunity for staff to do some additional preparation to discuss both the administrative process and also the technical permissions codes and how they were decided, what changes would be made, and the impacts that those would have on contractors. Mr. Feiner will cover tonight the administrative policies, and other staff will cover the technical issues next week. So, Mr. Feiner.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, governing body. So as, as the City Manager indicated, we kind of want to pull back the curtain a little bit on the development process and get into it a little more and walk you through that, through the steps, through the stages, and also look at the improvements that have been made, we are trying to make, and what some of the outcomes of those improvements have been. With me tonight, there are questions. We also have in the audience, we've got staff, Richard Faulkner, Development Services Director, Tom Rodman, Fire Inspector, Chief Duke on the fireside, as well as Mike Hall, current Planning Manager. These are really key folks in this process, so if we do get into territory, we do have backup. Okay, so the first thing to note here is sort of the organizational flow of commercial development. I'm going to talk about commercial development. That is anything that's not single or two-family residential. And it really is, it really is the thing that we focus the most on for many reasons. It's, the stakes are just much higher. This is where your biggest projects are. This is where your life safety issues are. And then this will also help lead us to the building code issue that we want to get into, or the building code changes we want to get into next week, since those are commercial-based. As you can see, the planning, mostly everything comes through the planning department for starters, and it goes through either our planning division or our development services division. But it continues to flow through other departments, namely fire, engineering, utilities, and as you can see, there's not really one decision-maker in this process. It's a collaborative, team-based process. Okay, there's three, we look at three stages of development for commercial development. There's a planning stage, the first stage, followed by the building permit stage, and then construction. So I'll walk you through each of those and get you familiar with those. The planning stage, this is, as it seems, a, what we start out with is pre-application as the first step. We call it pre-app meetings. These are really massively important. They're really the first chance for our review team, our city staff, to sit across the table from the design professional team, the applicant team, and share information, start to solve problems right there, and start to anticipate problems that we can both resolve. So that's hugely important. If we don't get something, or if we don't communicate something at this stage, it tends to rear its ugly head down the road as a surprise, and that's never a good thing for either side in this. It's very frustrating. So the second step, zoning, plating approval. Most people have zoning. Most people have zoning. Most people have that already. They don't have to go through the planning commission for a rezoning and come to you. So that could add another two and a half months to that process. But as I said, most folks don't have to do that, so they would skip over that step and then jump into that last step, which is the site plan approval. This is, I probably can't overemphasize this enough. This step, we actually moved up in our process recently. This step had always been part of the next phase in the building permit phase. But this is really truly planning. This is where planning comes into play the best. If we can, if we can work on a 30% concept design at this level and lay out a site and have buildings and parking and drainage all pretty much approved at that point, the rest of the building, reviewing the building, just goes much more smoother. So for a new, for a new construction in particular, this is, this has been wildly important for us to reduce times and reduce and increase predictability going through the permit process. So we get through the planning process, we get into the building permit stage, we get to submit construction plans, we get to review those plans. And what we normally would do is distribute, again, all those plans to about 10 different eyeballs out there, different agencies on our team, to work back and forth with the applicant's design professional, work through the issues, and come to some resolution. We not... Sometimes there are... We don't always come to a resolution on a particular review item. That's why we have appeals boards. There's four of them to help out. That's mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and our building and fire board. And you end up appointing these folks. These are local experts in the community, and they, they actually rule on the matters where staff and the applicant are not able to resolve a code issue. So with that in mind, once all the issues are resolved, then we go and issue a permit. Right now, we're at a two-to-six-week range, two weeks for commercial, for tenant finishes or remodels, and then six weeks is our average right now for new construction. And then we get to the stage that we, it's a little more exciting, we start to construct stuff, get out in the field and start building things or rehabilitating buildings. Along the way, there are inspections. As you start your building process, whether it begins with the footings, the foundations, the framing, the rough ends for plumbing, whatever it is, contractors will call our department, call Development Services, for that scheduled inspection to come out in the field. We are, right now, we're at 99.8% of those call-ins are fulfilled within 24 hours. We're at the, we're at the schedule that the contractor wants it to be on, if it's more than that. So we are, we are definitely doing a timely job of getting out when called. Eventually, we get to the completeness of the building. We have final inspections by six or seven different check-offs, the trade inspectors, fire, traffic engineering, whoever has a check-off in that process. And we get to issue a certificate of occupancy. And everybody, or a CO, that CO makes everybody happy, usually, should, and we just, and we move on. But as we know, and by the way, we do also work with applicants to do temporary COs. I don't know if any of you know that, but from time to time, if it's not a life safety issue, for instance, a building may have been built in the winter and they haven't gotten their landscaping yet, well, that's something we can issue a temporary CO for. They can come back in the spring, finish that up, and we will finalize the CO. So as I said, everybody's happy, right? Not always. So a couple of years ago, when I... Development Services came under planning in 2016. Even before that, Richard and I had entered into this idea that we really need to put together some focus groups and pick apart our process more. That included our inside team, the review team of staff. Were we getting in our own way? Were we doing things that were not efficient? And then we also reached out to the outside users, the, and the development community, the design professionals, the architects, the engineers, the builders, the contractors, the people that have to use the codes and deal with us. So that was, that was extremely enlightening and led to many changes, which I'm going to go over here in a second. One other thing we looked at that we hadn't been was just, we weren't looking at, we weren't measures. We weren't really looking at... We knew some things were slow at the time and didn't know exactly why. This kind of points out what was going on. We were seeing commercial permit review activity at basically pre-recession levels while we were dealing with a post-recession staff level. We were just, we had a lot more permits. So the green, the green bars are the commercial permit reviews. As of last year, we're almost at 300. We haven't hit that high since '07, it looks like, on here. So we had less people to review those. So naturally, there was just a permit load to deal with and not enough staff to deal with that. That led to many bad outcomes. As you can see here, our 2016 approval times for interior remodels were at five weeks, 35 days. New commercial or new construction or additions were at 65 days or nine and a half weeks. That was much harder than we had ever experienced. So what do we need to do? We put together an action plan in 2016 when we came together. We started doing some things before that, which you'll see, but mainly, the 2016 action plan put forth a vision, which included three key things. Development-efficient culture. We hear about being development-friendly. We want to be development-efficient because that is friendly. We need to be efficient. Time is money, and the process needed to flow a lot better, and we weren't, we weren't seeing that. Secondly, we want to institute a philosophy of yes. There's a lot of times we have to begin with no, sorry, no, but that's really easy. And I think getting to a yes can be really hard work, and it is. And so we have to challenge, and we challenge ourselves to hold us accountable that if we do have a no, that we do figure out a way to navigate down another path to get to yes with an equivalency or some other alternative. And we may not get to yes still. That may not be a feasible solution, but that's, we're going to challenge ourselves to do that and provide that try. And then we need to see ourselves as a team. So the customers on one side of the table and staff on the other side of the table, we're really on the same team. And I don't think we always, I know we didn't see ourselves quite like that, and I know we probably weren't perceived as that. So that's, that's kind of the cultural shifts in the vision that we wanted to accomplish. And all the while, because really our, the success of the development is really mirrors the success of our, of our work and vice versa. So all the while, that was kind of, kind of the pivoting we needed to do. All the while, and I'll just point out the last goal on that slide, we didn't, we also couldn't forget why we were doing these jobs. They were really to protect public health and safety. The codes are in place over time because something bad happened before. And somebody got hurt, property was damaged, and so we just, we just need to keep that in mind and not undermine that as we go about our new, new culture. Our improvement targets were simple, seemingly. Communication. We need to improve communication. We needed that early clarity in the process so that whatever we told you on Monday is the same answer on Friday. It's really important to have a consistent message. The pace, the pace needed to pick up. We did, we were, as you saw, our approval times were lagging. Lastly, quality control. This is kind of an important piece amongst all of this. A lot of stuff was falling through the cracks. A lot of that had to do with, with the permit levels that were high and the staffing levels that were low. Not all of it. We weren't measuring what we were doing. We just weren't, and you can't have success. You can't have positive outcomes if you don't do that. So that and among other things, what we needed to target in our improvements. So that led to, and I apologize, just, if you want to ask any questions along the way, please, please let me know. I'm, I'm almost there. If you want to indulge me a few more slides. There's a lot to cover, but we'll, as I said, if you can indulge me, I think it's important to understand this. So there's several staffing actions. We added the staff, our mechanical inspector back in 15, creating, there was a bottleneck in mechanical inspections because we only had one. We moved Development Services under planning so we could all be part of the same team. We dedicated a planner just for commercial development, just to coordinate pre-app meetings, just to follow up on site plan reviews. That's, that's something we never did before. We had a lot of trade inspector turnover. We had 75% of our trade inspectors retire or leave, which we lost a lot of institutional knowledge, but you know what? It was a great opportunity to have a new group to infuse this culture, new culture with, and have them help us get better. Other, other actions for staffing included adding a permanent front counter, FTE, the person you see when you walk into our department. For years, that was a temporary, that was through a temporary agency. There was no permanent person in place. We'd trade them, they would leave, or they didn't have the capacity that we needed. This is the biggest value play that we've made in hiring this person who can help with that customer, face-to-face, on the phone, and help coordinate those permits with the other agencies and track them. We added a second commercial plans examiner to help with that permit load, and it would in turn freeze up a supervisor to do more quality control, to actually supervise, to actually follow and track the issues that pop up, that are inevitably going to pop up. We're transferring the backflow inspector program from utilities over into Development Services just so we have all the plumbing, basically, under one house. And last, but certainly not least, we are very supportive and hoping that one day we can create FTEs that are dedicated in both fire and in engineering that are primarily dedicated for development review. I don't know if you know, but currently, those, those positions are really shared by three or four different people in fire, or three or four different people in engineering. And none of those positions have development review as their primary task. They have other tasks. This becomes a secondary task. So it's a matter of prioritizing, but it's also a matter of having a person who is dedicated to helping in this process as their primary purpose and having, keeping a consistent message throughout instead of from different individuals. The process actions that we got into, we've changed, this came straight from our focus groups with the development community to do more deferred fire plan submittals. That has had its pros and cons. We are still working through some of the bugs on that. It helped move projects along, but it also needed to be a, not all the fire plans do get submitted in a timely manner now, and so that's something we need to work through. We modified our first-in, first-out policy for small projects. Small projects that didn't need a lot of extensive review. We're getting behind the big projects, resurs, you know, is that necessary? And so they didn't have to wait weeks before they could get reviewed. So we created a, kind of a modified queue for them. I talked about the early site plan review, how important that was to move that up into the planning stage. We got, put iPads in the fields for our inspectors in fire and development services. We continued a City Works culture. I haven't touched on that too much, but thanks to, really, kudos go out to Richard for making sure. Not everybody was using our software program, our City Works project management, the way it should be for our permits, and that was creating a lot of running around trying to find out where projects are. Small business outreach. Again, Richard working with GoToPika and Glenda with their small business program and getting the information out to the small businesses to know how important it is to, A, talk to us as soon as possible, but also include the cost for design professionals for these plans that are going to be required if you're doing any building renovations. Lastly, last process actions. You'll hear next week more of this, the 2015 IBC, IFC, and Life Safety Codes. Yeah, we need to update our codes. The one thing I, you'll hear more about this next week, but the one thing I wanted to indicate here is the reason this was so important to us in our overall action plan is our 2006 IBC and IFC aren't always on the same page. You may have the IFC say one thing, the IBC say another thing about something very similar, and now you've got interpretation. Now you've got gray. And that could be a field interpretation that could come back, have to go into an appeals board. It just, it delays things and frustrates the heck out of people from time to time. So that's really important to get the 2015. Those are much more consistent with each other and takes out a lot of the inconsistencies. Public permit portal, we are hoping to finally launch this in March. This is a, the, right now, the applicant cannot see what we see. So the applicant wants to know where their permit is. They have to call. They have to get somebody to tell them that. In this situation, they can look online through the software and look at the same comments in real time and the status of those permits and the status of all those review partners in, in real time. So as far as transparency and communication, we feel this is a huge step forward in that. Electronic plan reviews are coming. We're almost there. Submitting electronic plans, mark them up on the screen. Everybody can see, every reviewer can see what those markups are. The applicant can see what those markups are in real time. Saves tremendous efficiency there. We hope to get the online contractor licensing later this, this year. We also hope to bring electrical, mechanical codes back to you as well. All right, so last, last part here is the outcome. Has this had any, has this made any difference? As you can see, some of our actions are taking hold, some are still taking hold, some haven't. For the commercial part of it, on the middle line there, our interior remodels have gone from 35 days approval time down to 14, so that's about three weeks reduction. Our new commercial, construction and additions have also seen about a three, three and a half week reduction down to 42 days. So these, these are calendar days. So we, we think the actions we've taken, the direction we're going is, is good, but we value greatly the, a continuous improvement to this process. And we absolutely want to know and need to know what we can do ultimately to have the best process we can. So we welcome, we welcome your thoughts. We welcome anything that can help towards that end, and I thank you for indulging me. I don't know when I started, so I thank you for your time. I'll just put it that way.
Bill, thank you very much for this presentation. I would like to ask if we could condense the, I think the question that is behind a lot of our heads is, it seems like you mentioned that the site review was extremely important, so much so that it was moved a little bit ahead in the process. But it seems that, if memory serves me right, that the challenges that we've had in the, you know, in recent times have been more than anything with regards to inspections that are having, that are happening in the process? are having, that are happening in the process and in-process inspections, and then, of course, the final inspections, because people want their COs and they want to get either to business. My question is, if this change has been instituted since 2016, what are the roadblocks that we're facing? Where's the bottleneck? So where are the areas that we're looking for improvement specifically to ensure that, yes, we're working towards the yes, but that we're not having the challenges that we're seeing?
Your Honor, we have, you said 16. The process that we talked about here has not been all institutes in 16. Many of it has come since the latter half of 17. We've been trying out things, but finally, we've moved into this early site plan review, which has taken a lot of the hiccups that happen when you're in the building permit stage. It has completely, I don't want to say completely, but it has, it has removed that as a, as a big obstacle. In terms of when you get into the building permit stage and you're getting something built, and then you have to go out and there's some inspections that go with it, and there is a interpretation in the field and that sort of thing, those all, you know, those are the sort of things where we need the, for instance, the code changes to have the building, the fire code be much more consistent. If we can, if there's anything that we can do better earlier, that's what we're trying to do, bring more clarity. I think a lot of those things need to take hold more. If there is a, if there is a specific instance where you were told one thing and then something, we said something else, we have to eliminate that. And so I would say, half of these actions that we've just talked about are probably coming on the heels of last year and getting up to full capacity. Remember also, we've had a change, we have had a change in inspectors on the building side and also on the fire side within the last six months. So for those who have not been through the process in the last, at least started, initiated with us in the last half of 17, you would, you should be seeing a different process and different results. Perfect? No. Different? Yes. Positive? Yes.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I am very excited about this. I think these are excellent ways of getting our community to be the business-friendly community we all want. A couple of quick questions. Do you have a staff person who is sort of a workflow manager, whose sole job is to make sure that everything, I mean, this is a very complicated process, just because it involves so many city departments. Do you have somebody who's dedicated to making sure that it, plans don't just get left on somebody's desk or in a drawer, even accidentally?
Exactly. Deputy Mayor, we do. We didn't have that until we had the two positions, the full-time person at the front counter, I keep calling the front counter person, that's probably not their official title. They probably wouldn't like me for that. They're an office specialist, but they, so having that position filled is a person that tracks permits, but also getting the second plans examiner now has freed up our manager, our permit manager, to manage and to-
That's a novel.
Right. They were doing planner views because of the permit load. So now that, that second plans reviewer is probably, you know, 70% trained. They're fairly, so we're ramping that up. So we, yeah, so there are two people in particular that, in addition to the dummy proof of the City Works software program, which is supposed to tell you, hey, this is due, hey, this is due. And if it's not, then you, then we need to find out why is it, why don't we have comments back on it yet? And so we, we have at least, I'll put 1.75 people on that right now.
That's excellent. So does that eliminate part of the problem of not having, I hate to use the term control, but managerial authority over some of these other folks in different departments? I know you talked about adding, the FD and fire and engineering, Mr. City Manager, I would be happy to sponsor that in the 19 budget, just because I feel that this is that important to get our community going. But does that help eliminate some of the challenge of having folks that are in departments where you can't call them up and say, hey, I need this done today?
Well, yes. You hit on a little bit of a sensitive area, because we are a different department than other, some reviewing agencies. We have several decision makers here. So if we had a person, and this is going to sound like we don't work together, we absolutely work together, but when, when there's a push comes to shove, we do, we do huddle up, we do bring other folks in that are at a higher pay grade, and we begin, okay, what are we, what can we do here? So we, we have that. That's not as efficient probably as having a person dedicated that is more of a liaison between our development services group and engineering or utilities or fire. So I think, yes, any way we can have some accountability within planning slash development services would be, would be helpful.
Wonderful. And my last question is, what do you need to get from, what was it, 30-something days, or no, 45 days down to 30 for the full construction?
Sure. You were 42.
Forty-two.
So that, I think, as we ramp up, we're pretty confident in shaving off another half a week of that. To get down to 30, I'll tell you where we have no control over. And this is probably why we're always, we will probably average higher than we should, and that is the applicant turnaround. We have, those days include the amount of time they take to get back to us.
Okay.
And we have no control over that, which is why we take an average, because most of them want to get it back to us, but not all of them turn it around in two weeks.
As long as we're not holding anybody up, that's my goal.
And that's my goal.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Finder, thank you for your presentation. As you'll recall, recently, there was a situation where Councilman Lesser actually kind of took on Herculean task and worked with you and the city manager to get a restaurant open. And as I recall the facts of the situation, this restaurant had a friar that was UL or some sort of insurance underwriting agency's approval, but it hadn't been seen by the city in that, I think held up maybe by three weeks, a restaurant opening. Is there anything we can do in the future in our processes to maybe eliminate that? I mean, if something is UL listed or has been tested, I mean, just because we haven't seen it before, is there something we can do, I guess, to alleviate that of happening in the future?
Sure. Councilman Emerson, that was a, that was a unique situation in that that particular product was not listed high enough on the UL listing. It was actually specifically listed that that type of a UL listing goes to the appeals board. So if you were looking for a change so that it, first of all, it won't happen again because that particular type of product now can be approved administratively, once the appeals board, those, our local mechanical board people sign off on it. But to not have that actually take place, to put more authority in the administrative side of things, I guess, would need a change to the code itself, the, in this, in this specific case, the mechanical code. So we would work with the mechanical board on getting, when that comes due, which I think that was in my presentation, that is one of the ones that are, that's coming back soon, later this year.
Thank you.
Councilman McLeer?
How does our timeline compare to other cities' size? And I know you want to get better and get better. How are you going to know when you're there?
Councilman McLeer, very good question. We can go out and ask what other cities do. I don't know, it's an apples-to-apples comparison ever, but that is something we can, we can go out and do and ask, probably our peer cities. It's just, it's just, everybody's different. Just for, just having the position to review things, that that's your primary job, you know, I don't know if they have that or they don't have that. I don't know if it's a secondary role for the engineers or the, and the fire inspectors or not. So we can, we can certainly benchmark some of that and bring that information back the best we can.
I was just, I was just wondering if you knew, I mean, if you had already looked at that.
Not, not specifically to try and compare when they start their clock versus when they end their clock and how we do it. It does-
So how are you going to know when you're the best that you can be?
When are we the best? When you stop getting calls.
You know what? I've had some good calls lately, so I know this.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to do a follow-up, and then I did have a question. The follow-up question being, we have the, I think there are four appeals boards, the technical appeals boards. My understanding is they don't have to meet very often. Is that so? How often a year would you say each or all of them meet?
They are scheduled every month, but probably once every three months, according to staff.
That's kind of what I thought. I wasn't even sure they met that often, because I remember getting, kind of deep dive into that when we were doing nominations and finding out how many people were available. A suggestion along those lines is that if we wanted to set a protocol that whenever something needed a review board, look, we convened the board within seven days, you know, within a week, and just did it, rather than lock it into the delay and the arbitrary, which did happen in this case because of the holidays and so on, that ended up with this gentleman waiting like five weeks. And it had to do with the holidays when it came in, too. I'm not saying, but it would be something to consider to help move along.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Hiller, we've actually done that, where we've, where we, we knew something had to be decided on. We need about a week or so to turn that around if we have the information. And we can do that, and we've done that. So I think we were prepared to do it here. It just worked out where it was coming up next week, so we left it, you know.
If I may, the question overall was, you, you, this is a really great presentation, by the way, and I'm excited to see all the things that were there, but the only reference that you made to a meeting with the small business people was in 2015. And most of us are aware that there was a meeting fairly recently with small business people. I'm not quite sure who from the staff met with them, and we kind of caught city manager short on a report. Based on the fact that it looks like all of these improvements and process changes were in progress by the time that meeting occurred, I wondered what, how that meeting went and what those, that new batch of small business persons, what their reaction was to this and whether they felt like it was good enough.
Councilwoman Hiller, I guess, you know, we presented all of the information. I went to the meeting and heard that information. That was presented to the group that we convened, that I convened, and we've gone through the information, discussed those particular issues, and looked at how the changes that have been occurring would have addressed much of those situations, many of those situations. Probably not every one, but many of them. And so I think that you would see that the progress that we're making and the processes that we have in place would hopefully have eliminated some of those situations from ever of occurring.
As we talked about, when we don't get the calls, I didn't get any follow-up, and I haven't chased anybody down, so they didn't, I didn't get any, that was a waste of time call.
Right. And the last thing I'll say is, I think that the communication line that we have right now that's going relative to these issues, both with Mr. Finder's staff and myself and the developers, I think we're going to be able to head those things off when we have issues as soon, a lot quicker than we have in the past. I know that Mr. Gerber even addressed different issues and was, started that process before I came. So I think that attention to issues as they come up is now the mantra that we're using when we're dealing with, with different businesses and industry.
Thank you. I think Topeka is probably not different than anyplace else, but I'm sure they would love to be asked and they would be happy to tell you. Thank you.
Any other comments for Mr. Finder or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Finder, thank you for a fabulous presentation. We now proceed to item C of the non-action items, if the clerk would read.
C is notification of possible action at the February 20, 2018 meeting regarding suspension of governing body rules to allow reconsideration of the operating time restrictions set out in ordinance number 20109 Aqua Blast Laundry Rezoning.
City Manager?
Mayor Governing Body, this item is on the agenda to inform the governing body of the planned action at the next meeting in February, on February 20th. All documents related to what was discussed in the past have been included in your packet and will be again next week. And I guess I'll turn it over to City Attorney Robertson if she has any additional comments relative to the process that we would follow.
Thank you, City Manager. Actually, I don't at this point. If we get to the next meeting and the first course of action would be a motion to suspend the rules, so we could entertain a motion for reconsideration of the ordinance. And as each step passes, if it does, we would go on to the next step. If it fails, then we would be done. But the first step would be a motion to suspend the rules, so we could proceed with considering, reconsidering the ordinance. Because right now, our rules don't allow for us to reconsider outside of six months from the time that it was first discussed.
I appreciate the fact that Councilman Lesser and the staff have been so cautious to ensure that we, before we go through this process, we have the time today to make that announcement, to make it public, so that the citizens that were very concerned with this issue are able to have the heads up. So I really appreciate all of the work that you all have done in regards to this matter to ensure that there's transparency in us bringing that back up.
And I, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was going to say, I will have like a procedural outline of how things will go, if you all would like that. I provided it to Councilmember Lesser previously, just so he'd have an idea of how everything would work, and I could send that to the body ahead of time, if you all would like.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
I'm a little lost. Why are we bringing this back up?
Councilman Lesser, would you like to?
I'm happy to. First, I would want to ask, I don't know if we can even have discussion on the item though tonight, or can we?
You can talk about it. It's a discussion-only item, so you absolutely can talk about it at this point. Just can't take any action.
I think the main reason we're bringing it up, back up, is obviously to discuss amending the hours. The owner has come forth, I believe you should have a letter in there, in your packet of, that he will not move forward under the current guidelines or the current operating times. I think it leads to something that fundamentally we possibly need to look at as a council from the standpoint of, the difficult thing is we're in a quasi-judicial position in approving these, but a lot of times, what I've learned through this process is we do not have always all the information at our disposal to, to, to make a informed decision.
That still didn't answer my question. I mean, we've already considered this, so why are we doing it again within six months?
I think I answered that. I said to bring, to reevaluate the hours that it would be open.
We discussed the hours. That's one of the reasons why I voted on it, because the hours got changed. So I guess I'll call you, Lisa, and talk to you, because I, I'm just kind of-
Councilmember Ortiz, I think what Councilmember Lesser is looking to do is to actually suspend the rules so that we can entertain a motion to reconsider the timeframe, because he has gotten information from the owner, who has said that the timeframe, I guess, I think it's a closed time of 10 o'clock PM, is not particularly workable, and he won't proceed unless it's a little bit later. Not a 24-hour, but as I understand it, perhaps 2:00 AM the next day.
That's correct.
If you could explain further, then, then the public will know, as well as maybe those who haven't had a chance to read the material.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hiller. Councilman Lesser, could you elaborate a little bit on the discussion that you had?
Certainly, certainly. Basically, the start to finish is, the owner has said he will not invest in the, the owner has said he will not invest in this project. He will pull the plug, he will not build the laundromat, and, and he will go down, down the road if he is not able to have some expanded hours. The hours of closing at 10 o'clock do not allow the facility to- The hours of closing at 10 o'clock do not allow the facility to cash flow for it. He's not looking for 24-hours operation, but he would like to work to, to be able to be open till 2:00 in the morning so that the, the operation can be feasible for a $2 million investment.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
With all due respect, I, I will look at this. I don't know if I'll reconsider it, because we have voted on this, and I am tired of people coming up and bullying us. So he's short five hours of the 24 hours. So, you know, there's a ti, a point in time when we have to say, okay. I mean, I hate to run away any business, but we can't continue to, okay, well, we're not gonna play your game. Go ahead, take your ball and go home. I mean, I just don't like that bully effect, and I felt like that was long and hard, and, and that's what we voted on. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Lesser.
And I think your point is well-taken, and I would agree with, with the bullying portion of those type of situations that come through the body. I think, though, we also have to be careful sometimes that, I don't know that not having all the information qualifies it as a bullying situation. I'm sorry?
When the board...
Was there something that, that was the big thing, was the hour?
Anybody else have any questions for Councilwoman Heller?
Well, I, I did read through that basic material, and I just want to draw you out a little, I guess, that, could you say what your proposal will be? And then also, and how it differs from what was approved? And then, I believe in the written material, there was some comparison of hours of other businesses in the immediate area that were comparable.
My proposal would be that he'd be open, be able to be open until 2:00 in the morning. Currently, at this point in time, we have a 24-hour storage facility across the street. We have a 24-hour car wash across the street. We have, we did have a trampoline park that was open until 11:00. And then within a mile and a half radius, we have four bar and grills that are open until 2:00 in the morning. All that put into, putting into play during my discussions with him was coming, trying to come up with a compromise that would allow him to completely still operate his facility and build his facility here, but not be a 24-hour operation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lesser. And I think that just for the bodies, so that we could understand where, where the conversation is going, it's not that we will immediately bring to the body the, the question of the hours of the Aqua Blast. The, the proposal here tonight is for everybody to understand that there will be a petition to suspend those rules. So if at any point in time the body does not agree to suspend the rules, then the discussion does not occur. But it is not that there is going to be a reconsideration of an item without there being an opportunity for the body to make that vote on whether they want to suspend the rules to do so or not. I just want to make sure that that is clear. Any other questions with regards to this item? Okay, seeing none, we proceed with announcements. The city manager, oh, if the clerk would read.
February 20th, preliminary agenda, we have two presentations, 2017 financial fourth quarter report and the planning department 2017 year-end report. We have a board appointment, Topeka Human Relations Commission, and one for the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board. For the action items, we have a resolution on the tax increment financing policy and then possible suspension of rules for the Aqua Blast ordinance and also the governing body rules. Discussion includes 2015 building code updates and a continued discussion on the fireworks.
City Manager.
I have no additional announcements tonight.
Thank you, City Manager. A few announcements here. I just wanted to congratulate the Lulac Senior Center and their team for putting together a lovely sweetheart dance. I was told the city manager was over there celebrating with the Hispanic community, and it was wonderful to see Councilwoman Padilla there as well. A lot of the funds that are raised are not only there to support Lulac Senior Center, who provides support for the elderly on the east side of our city, but also, most importantly, it also supports scholarships. They gave over $9,000 last year in scholarships for individuals that were wanting to go to college. So that's pretty exciting. I wanted to apologize publicly to Ms. Teresa Miller. As I was coming over, Margot let me know that she called, and I wasn't able to listen to the message. So Teresa, I apologize that I wasn't able to run back into the office. I was trying to get here on time. I wanted to let know, everybody know that I received a great survey that I want to share with everybody. It's the 2017 Menino Survey of Mayors, and it talks about the areas that are impacting cities the most. I will pass along this information to the rest of the body, and I will probably also share it with the clerk so that if anybody is interested in looking at this, they could do so. I found very interesting that one of the major causes nationwide, according to the individuals that participated in the survey, for them to leave was availability of housing when people were leaving a community. So as we are talking and, and taking a look at what we're doing in our community, I think it's really important for us to keep that in mind. Again, I will share this information. One delicate subject, I, I am constantly communicating with individuals online and also with, you know, through Facebook and getting information from the community. And I was really appreciative of Chief Cochran when he provided me quick information. There has been some talk in the, in the internet that there's availability of over 35 states that allow for police officers to involve themselves in sexual relationships with their, the people that they were arresting. And immediately, this was a cause for concern for our citizens, and I received an email, and Chief Cochran went ahead, and just as I suspected, I wanted to let everybody know that that is not the case. The city of Topeka, apparently there is vague language with regards to the state law. However, at the city of Topeka level, there are ethical and there's administrative policies that pertain to this. And being that we had a conversation last week about the awareness of sexual and domestic violence, I thought that it was important to bring this clarification so that there would be no confusion that that does not happen in the city of Topeka. Extremely important. That is all I have for tonight. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to wish a Happy Valentine's Day to my lovely bride who tolerates me and all of my shenanigans.
Councilman Mays, Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Lesser. Councilwoman Heller.
I wanted to add three things. One, shout out some kudos to Chief Cochran. This afternoon, we got some, we got copied in on some social media that was really successful, very much along the lines of what advocates in the community have been talking about in terms of officers turning potentially bad situations into very positive ones, particularly engaging kids and, and being, so that kids have a good feeling about law enforcement, even if somebody had to come down on an issue and, and can look forward still to even careers in law enforcement. So everybody, watch your, watch your email about that. I think we all got it. Wanted to, second, back up Ward Mead Neighborhood Improvement Association President Deborah Edwards that, that shared a few words at the end of the last meeting. Wanted to make sure that her question got heard. Her, her challenge to us was, if somebody says, what's the city's position about Sumner? What do we say? And I'd like to challenge all of us that, that we should come up with an answer. People have been really, on the council and the public have been so positive about Sumner. Just a little detail about the, the meeting that, that occurred now, some weeks ago, when the NIA met with the city about the city's legal position about whether the city could go forward and, and take action to enforce the deed restrictions. And the then interim, uh, deputy city manager Gerber shared with them that legal's opinion was no, that the way those were written, the city itself didn't have standing. But they did say that the neighborhood arguably did and that the state arguably did as the, as the historic preservation office. Further, though, they said, you know, if you can get a, a legal opinion that would, that would take another tack on this, that we should consider, please bring it back to us. And I wanted to make sure that you all knew that. The basis of their angle is that, is that it's hurt the neighborhood to have what was supposed to have been at least a $5 million improvement, instead sit and deteriorate and drag down the neighborhood and the property values and invite crime. I would suggest, as we continue working on this, that we as a city have some of those damages as well. That, you know, we were promised that, that there would be 5 million improvement in that building, which was local jobs and local economy, just for that event itself, like we, like we invest in economic development. At this point, with deterioration, there's 10 million roughly that it would take to bring that building back. Further, the depressed property values are absolutely running counter to the investments that we're making in that neighborhood and others. They're very, very seriously investing. And third, if, if that building doesn't come back and Topeka doesn't end up being part of the UNESCO nomination, or, and we are a keystone to that UNESCO nomination, if, if we don't get it at the United States, if it doesn't come together, I would say that there is a big loss to us and Topeka, as well as the United States, for failing to be able to get, to get that, to get Topeka and the joint Monroe-Sumner sites on that register with that recognition. And literally millions of dollars in lost tourism for Topeka alone. So just some things to think about. I hope that, I, I'm gonna visit with the city manager about the subject, but if, I do think we need a statement, if we agree, of support for the redevelopment of Sumner, both in the building and the activities in it. And if anybody has any ideas of how that could be expressed or, or what we should do, I would be happy to hear them, and I, and have them go to the city manager as well. And last but not least, Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Councilwoman Heller. Councilwoman Clear.
I just want to remind everyone about the franchise fee program, and this helps assist qualified constituents with heating and cooling, as well as water bills. You can pick up the application from Neighborhood Relations, Topeka Public Library, or you can fill them out online. You can also go to CRC Care Center at Avondale East on Wednesdays and Thursdays. This is different. This year, so Wednesdays and Thursdays from 9:00 to 3:00, and they will help you fill out this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ortiz. Councilwoman Emerson.
On behalf of District Four and District Three, I just wanted to say that East Topeka Learning Center bid last week. Do not know who's low yet. I, I heard the bids, the low bids were within the, within the budget, so that's great news. Construction should commence sometime this spring, and that, that'll be a great thing for, even though it's in District Three, it's right across the street from District Four. So that'll be, that'll be a great thing for East Topeka and, and the city at large. Secondly, I just want to thank the finance staff, Public Works, Utilities, and everybody that arranged our capital improvement project tour on Saturday. It was a great thing to see everything that's happening in the city and all the things planned for 2018, so thank you.
Councilman Padilla.
Just to follow up with Councilman Emerson. I too appreciated all the detail and work that went into the bus tour. It really sort of optimized a lot of things, and I think it helps when we're answering questions from the public about how their tax dollars are being spent, because they don't see it in their neighborhood. They tend to believe nothing's getting done, so I really appreciate that opportunity. I also would like to thank our chief, Greg Duke, for the presentation he made and having his staff available when we stopped there at the station. It was interesting to listen to some of the details about the equipment that you've acquired for the department and some of the safety features that the new equipment is bringing to the job for the firefighters. I think that's important for us to know. So thank you, Chief. That was a good presentation. I'd like to compliment staff, Molly Hadfield. I've had a lot of people call me and tell me that they liked that little summary that she does on the website of the council meeting. She said, you know, I don't know if I have time to watch everything, but that little summary really helps me out to get a feel of what happened. So I think, I think that's well done. And somebody brought us Valentine's. We don't know who, but I appreciate that thought. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. We now proceed to public comments. The first person signed up to speak is Leslie Hayward.
What are the Topeka Police Department's body cameras for? During a vigil held in Topeka for Michael Brown, the young man shot and killed by St. Louis Police in 2014, I remember an officer from the Topeka Police Department who spoke to the crowd and promoted their new body cameras as a tool for the public, an assurance of proper conduct and accountability. This proved to be a lie when not even three years later, TPD used body camera footage to torment and re-traumatize the White family over and over. I went to the State House today in support of Representative Alcala's House bill regarding the disclosure of police information. I was more than upset to hear straight from the reviser's mouth that there is nothing in the state law as it is written now that prevents law enforcement or city leaders from releasing body camera footage to any interested persons, though there is a long list of people who publicly express their hands as tied because of Kansas state law. I was peeved still with Topeka's leaders in regards to the shooting of Dominique White when I heard the opponents to the bill speak of their experience. Police and sheriff's office leaders from Olahtha and Windock Counties were not opposed to releasing information in officer-involved shootings to the family and doing so quickly. They cited that that is in fact what they do and what they have done. So why didn't it happen in Topeka? I appreciate thoughtfulness from our leaders in their work, though. After finding out that Dominique's murderer was an officer with a long history of overzealousness and violence, and after months of silence and false finger pointing, it now seems as those in power were just buying time. There is no more time to buy. Now is when we create a city ordinance that ensures families answers in police-related shootings.
Thank you for your comments. Next person signed up to speak is Marty Hiller.
Good evening, everyone. This afternoon, I joined dozens of others at the Capitol for a hearing in support of Representative Alcala's House Bill 2571 regarding the disclosure of body camera footage from law enforcement agencies. There was also a bill put forth of a similar regard this morning by Senator Sue Wallencamp, and it also saw a hearing. I've been to a number of city council meetings thus far, and I've seen ordinances brought forth of matters where there is perhaps a precedent at the state level, the sale and age restriction of tobacco products, the use of fireworks within a city's limits, having pot-bellied pigs as pets within city limits, tax incentives for developers, investments in a variety of neighborhood programs, and so on. I recognize the power our governing body has in not only starting dialogue about issues pertinent to Topeka and its citizens, but in successfully passing ordinances that enact broad change in our city. Again, in engaging with members of your community in the wake of the death of Dominique White, you've shown concern and a willingness to put great thought into what can be done going forward. And we have, and we as citizens have as well, and continue to do so. As we do that work, it is, in my estimation, paramount that you begin discussion toward a body cam ordinance that will give a decedent's family quicker and more affordable access to any media or information if their loved one has been killed by members of our law enforcement agencies. Some of you might remember that I was a former member of the city of Topeka, and I worked in the capacity of the attorney's office. And I would often start my day at the Topeka Police Department. One morning, as I was departing, I noticed a family who was being addressed by three members of TPD, who were carefully explaining to them that their loved one, a son, had been killed in an exchange with... been killed in an exchange with the police department in the wee hours prior. I noticed two men to the right of them who appeared to be detectives, standing with inside of the family, whispering to another, whispering to one another and snickering. As an employee of the city, I was devastated but not at all surprised, it wasn't much for me to draw attention as I moved through those back offices. I bring that up not, not to merely reinforce a narrative that is anti-police, but to illustrate why this idea of transparency and accountability is so important, and that it gives no quarter for the callousness and indoctrination that can infect even our most devoted law enforcement agents, and draws us closer to upholding our constitutional right to due process. If there is no one to bear witness when these incidents occur, then it's a lot easier to shift the goalpost. Adding this matter to the city's agenda brings us one step closer to enacting a change we all need at all levels. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this point in time, we are needing to recess into executive session, if the attorney would read.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 30 minutes, for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters related to contract negotiations, as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. To aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Financial and Administrative Services Director Nikki Lee, Union Resources Director Jackie Russell, Senior Assistant City Attorney Catherine Walter, Budget and Performance Manager Nick Hawkins, and myself.
Is there a mo, thank you, Councilman Cohen. Councilman Padilla seconds, all those in favor, please vote. Motion passes. At this point in time, it's 8:12, we will take a five-minute recess as the room empties, and after that, I will announce the time before we start the executive session. It is 8:20, and we are going to start with our discussion items.